...meeting of Wednesday, February 3rd, 26th at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember those in our community as we go into this moment of meditation that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, both locally and globally. Remember those who have lost loved ones in our community since the last time we were in these chambers. Also ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of January 20th, 2016, and bills for payment on January 29th and February 5th, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Okay, do we have any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard, our first citizen to sign in was Mr. Randy Barnes.
Good morning, Council President, Council members, administration, staff, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, and my subject topic today is $81,732, contract employees, friends and family. And I got to think, beginning of the month, so this is another beginning of the month where the taxpayers get to write out $1,000 check to Mr. James Clem, consultant to City Council. And this is on top of the pension that he earned of $69,732, as reported in the Erie Times News. And Mr. Clem was, is, I should say was, digitally preserving the records. We know from the August 18th memo last year that he said that would be done at the end of last year. Now, I brought up a question, and so did the Erie Times News last month, saying, was there no one in City Hall capable of calling Prillo Enterprises and having these records microfished, picked up and digitally preserved? And I guess when they say is no one in City Hall, is no one in City Hall capable of doing that? I guess that refers to the seven council members before me. Nobody on council was able to pick up the phone and call Prillo Enterprises and have them come over and pick up the microfilm and have it digitally preserved. There was four council members that couldn't do that because they said, we have to have Mr. Clem here for two years in order to digitally preserve these records. And those four council people were Heran Kunso, Jones, Winarski and Witherspoon, who voted for $1,000 a month for 24 months. Well, we know these records are done, they were done last year, so we went January, now we've got another month of $1,000 given to this consultant who earned the largest pension ever. So I just wonder, what could have we done with that $1,000 this month? Is there anything at all that the city could have done with that $1,000 to help our disadvantaged youth, the minority in the community? Anything at all that $1,000 could have been used for? So that struck me this morning, I thought, well, in the past 16, 18 months, we've given Mr. Clem $1,000 a month to call Prillo Enterprises and help them pick up the microfilm, we could have bought a body camera every month. We could have had 16 or 18 body cameras, and instead we chose, four people chose to give their friend $1,000 a month for two years after he retired. And those four people were, of course, were Heran Kunso, Jones, Winarski and Witherspoon. So I think, what's more important? Is it more important to give our family and friends extra money because we have the power as council people to do that? Or is it more important to protect the citizens of Erie and those people that visit the city of Erie? Which is more important? Well, I guess when you become a council member and you can find two or three other council members to vote with you, it's more important to give Mr. Clem $1,000 a month to digitize these records. And here for a year and a half, I thought that meant he was somebody who's actually PDFing files. I didn't realize the records, they were already on microfilm. We just had to call Prillo Enterprises, Ethan Parade, and have them come and pick it up. And they did that, just like they'd done in the last 20 years of records, when Mr. Clem held office and made more than the mayor did for most of those years he was in office. He had the last 20 years digitized. So in my mind, this was all just a big farce. It was just as a farce by a couple of council members whose friend, Mr. Clem, they thought, hey, they could convince two other council members, one that wasn't even going to run for election, so it didn't matter how she voted, to vote to give this man $1,000 a month. Well, why not? That's what getting elected is all about, isn't it? Helping your friends and family, maybe get jobs in City Hall, your children, your grandchildren, your sister, brother-in-law. Isn't that what it's all about if you're an elected council person? Because from now, for years, we can point to this instance in history where Heran Kunso, Jones, Winarski and Witherspoon chose to give $1,000 a month to their friend so he could make a phone call and have these microfilm picked up. It's almost embarrassing, isn't it? Does it make you feel good, Heran Kunso, Jones, Mersky and Winarski? Witherspoon? I'm sorry, not Mr. Mersky, I apologize. Heran Kunso, Jones, Winarski, Witherspoon. Is it good when you hear your name read from the official record, you voted to give this man $1,000 a month? We had one council person say, you know, this is a luxury we can't afford. You know, I commend that council person, you see, he was accurate. Hey, thank you very much and have a good day.
Thank you for your time. Up next is Amy Copitor.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I'm here to talk-
Name and address for the record, please.
913 State Street, apartment 903, Erie 16501. I'm here to talk about the state of the buses. It seems that our buses are being used as a power play. We've forgotten about the real people who this issue is about, is that it is our citizens. It is our average people, the people who struggle, people who don't even sometimes get above poverty level, are disabled, which we have a giant community representation here in the city of Erie. Many of these people receive social security, so this, for the lack of better word, crud that I'm hearing from county council about double taxation. Quite frankly, I think if we took an inventory of our Erie citizens, especially those in downtown, we would see that a majority of them, not all of them, but a majority of them are receiving social security, are on Section 8, are on welfare, on agencies like these, where we don't make a lot of money, where the government does help pick us up. So there's no reason for those people to be double taxed, so to speak. In addition to this, I think we have to remember where the parliamentary procedure began, unless rules of parliamentary conduct are different here. The county council cannot make a brand-new ordinance on something that was beginning in this council. The 38th ordinance of the year 1966 began here with EMTA. It was not county council, they did not co-sign the ordinance, it was just the representation at that time of this council. Hence, I believe the authority resides with you. I believe you have the majority on this. And let's, let us get some things straightforward, the consumers out there, and the people in the clientele, and even for county council, God bless them. The fact remains is that PennDOT, not the county, although their contribution is bigger than ours at this moment, and I have discussed before at this forum about financial and fiscal responsibility, so I won't go down that road at the moment. PennDOT is the one that does $12 million to EMTA. It is a trickle-down effect. So PennDOT, and if we want to supersede PennDOT, which I am going to make a few calls to my friends at the Federal Transit Administration and get in touch with Mike Tan about this. I have a meeting for, I believe it's February 26th, sometime the end of this month, and we're going to meet up again. I know that you have a few members now that are on the compromising of that board. I invite you to come down with me on that day and discuss this for the betterment of our community. We cannot supersede City Council because it began here. We are the ones that are in need of mass transit. When we talk about mass transit, we are talking about the masses. We are talking where the most population is because the most population gets the most funding. Without that funding, everything sinks. If there is not that much funding for Albion, for Cory, and the other thing about this that I really, that kind of gets me in a little bit of an uproar, is that if county council thought that there was something that was needed, then they should have gone to Mike Tan at EMTA, said, you know what? We have a need here. Mike is the best executive director that I know of thus far in EMTA. He surpassed his predecessor by miles and miles. And it would be just downright wrong to allow the county to force us to give us one seat for $270,000. That is outrageous, that's an imbalance. We need to do something together. It reminds me of being a child, and, you know, you would have your own little group of friends. I'll finish up with this. We would have our own little group of friends, and you would be in two sandboxes. First, they'd be in one sandbox and everybody'd be playing fine. Then somebody would take somebody's marble, or something would happen, some words, and they'd go off in two separate sandboxes. Really want to unify Erie, get everybody back to the same sandbox?
Thank you for your time, Amy. Up next on our list of citizens to be heard, Glenn Cessna. Glenn Cessna. Seeing that Glenn is not here, it's opened up to the public forum, any other citizens to be heard?
Has some specific comments on the official ordinance? Should we pull off on that until we got to the-
Rose, where should he come in on this?
I think he can speak now.
Yeah, why don't you come up to the podium now?
Good morning, my name is Nick Limberopolis, I'm Government Relations Counsel for Crown Castle. I'm standing in this morning for my colleague Bob Ritter, who's been working with the city on their communications facility ordinance, and we appreciate the city's willingness to work cooperatively and collaboratively with us over the past few weeks and months on a pretty sound wireless siting policy for purposes of putting communications infrastructure both inside and outside the right-of-way. We have one specific comment, it's concerning-
Excuse me, one minute. Mr. President, just for a point of order, maybe clarity, would this constitute testimony on a public hearing that's closed? I know we had a similar issue before, and this is no disrespect, but just for the point of order and appropriateness, I'm not sure if these comments would be technically considered testimony for a public hearing, because that's closed. So normally, there wouldn't be any other dialogue. We've even asked citizens to not speak on public hearing topics that have been closed. So I guess I'm asking the question, I don't know if I'm articulating in our, solicitor stepped out for a moment, yeah.
Mr. President, I think Councilman Jones is 100% correct on that. We experienced that before, and we were advised by our attorneys that that would be another testimony. Then you have to give the others pros and cons to speak again, and ask to have a recorder here as well.
Mr. Carley, just to update you, we have a gentleman here from Crown Castle, he wanted to speak on the ordinance, and we wanted to know, does this constitute public, we already had a public hearing, is this allowable, or does it-
At the public hearing, we took into consideration some of Crown Castle's concerns. Those concerns were addressed and were incorporated into this. Now, if they're going to object to it now, I think it's too late to take objections to it. The final draft, I think, actually erased what their concerns were.
Okay. So to your point, is this to object to any of the ordinance?
It is admittedly yet another proposed revision. Like I said, by and large, we're very pleased with the outcome of this exercise, and we do note that you guys took into account some of our proposed revisions, but there's just one specific additional comment we wanted to provide.
Well, what, oh, go ahead. What I was going to say is, due to the nature of the topic, you're out of order, and so we're going to have to ask you to sit down. If you would like, you can leave your contact information with the clerk, and we can get back to you, and we can always make amendments as necessary. So, thank you for your time, and I apologize for-
Sorry, didn't mean to be out of order, just to be clear. By and large, this has been a really fruitful exercise for us, so we appreciate the city working with us.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the clarification. All right. Any other citizens to be heard?
By-
Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Okay, ordinances for final passage, Council File 15939, Official Ordinance Number Two, 2016, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie, number 80-2005, providing for purposes, adding and amending defined terms establishing certain general and specific standards relating to location, placement, construction and maintenance of tower-based wireless communications facilities and non-tower wireless communication facilities, providing for the regulation of such facilities within and outside of the public rights way, providing for the enforcement of said regulations and including severability and repealer provisions as amended. By Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill 15939, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number Two of 2016, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council pass Official File Ordinance Number Two of 2016, finally by a 7, nay 0. Council File Number 15940, Official Ordinance Number Three of 2016, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from appropriated anticipated revenue from Erie Insurance, a donation for smoke alarms for the Bureau of Fire of the city of Erie. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15940, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number Three of 2016, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council pass Official File Ordinance Number Three, 2016, by a 7, nay 0. Have an ordinance for first reading. Council File 15942, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 to be received as a burn criminal justice innovation grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the BCJI Little Italy program. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Number 15942, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a question. Did the, and Neighborhood Watch, or organization, write a specific proposal for this money for Little Italy? Or did we, the city, write a proposal for the money for Little Italy? Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
The writing of the grant was a collab, my understanding, a collaborative effort between the Department of Justice, the federal Department of Justice across the street, folks in that department, as well as Little Italy folks, as well as individuals from the city and the administration around some improvements in that part of the city. So it was a collaborative grant-writing effort that came through a couple of years ago.
Okay. Do we know if this one-time grant or next year, is it open again to the public? The reason I'm asking that is, I would like to see a grant written for the east side of Erie in the same manner.
Well, I think what we can do with that is, the Sisters of St. Joseph run that Little Italy program, you know, they're intricately involved. They have started one on the east side, so if it's appropriate, we could work with them to, as funds become available, apply for those grants for an east side one.
Thank you, sir.
And I believe that building off the success of this, you know, it even strengthens that application.
Mr. President?
Mr. Brennan?
I did just one quick comment about that regarding the east side portion of that operation. They are doing a study right now, the east side, looking at the assets and talking to the residents in the area. I just talked to Margarita over there just yesterday, and we were kind of talking about what they're doing on the east side. So that's one positive thing that they're, that particular organization is doing to the benefit of the east side.
Ms. Rose, can you continue with the vote?
Okay, continuing roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15942, by a 7, nay 0, on first reading. Okay, we have one item under Old Business. A resolution sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance number 80-2005, and a public hearing held Wednesday, January 20th, 2016, in city council chambers, the request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Hitter-Walter Architecture and Design for construction of a stage cover at Liberty Park is hereby approved by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. And then now, don't take us into new business.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
So moved, does anyone have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Witherspoon.
Any separations?
Seeing none.
Okay, voting on the wave rules, or on moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. Mr. President, we also have some wave rules today. Couple of late additions by the administration. We'll have to vote on these separately.
Right, exactly, I was going to say, you want to do a roll call for a vote to wave rules?
I think we should vote on them separately.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so Resolution 18, voting on the wave rules. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. This is sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the city council that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to Church &amp; Murdoch Electric for a new generator and new electrical service at fire station number 11 for the Bureau of Fire of the city of Erie at a total cost of $19,310. Mrs. Arrington, Mrs. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Just for the information of the public, the generator blew at the West Day Street Firehouse. It's our backup generator, in case the power goes out, it is a necessity for essential fire service, and that's why it's an emergency vote.
Okay, second wave rules. Voting to wave the rules. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. Resolution by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, where as the mayor and comptroller have previously been authorized to execute the engineering agreement for final design, Part One, right-of-way acquisition, Part Two, and construction support services, Part Three, in the amount negotiated of $580,304.53 for the McBride viaduct removal project between the city of Erie and Trans System Corporation Consultants. And where a subsequent review of the contract by PennDOT Central Office in Harrisburg, PA, caused the contract amount to be increased by $489.79. The contract for engineering agreement is hereby awarded in the revised sum not to exceed $580,794.32, and that the proper city officials be and are hereby authorized to direct to sign said contract on behalf of the city of Erie.
Mr. President?
Mr. Witherspoon.
Just for the record, that the increase was based on a human error in typing, and once it was caught, it was brought to administration attention, and they brought it down right away. Other than that, there's no changes in the process.
Correct. And that error actually was on PennDOT's part, not on the city's part, so that's what it's, we're voting to correct.
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. That'll take us to new business, or to committee reports.
Committee reports. All right. Mrs. Arrington, any committee report?
I had the pleasure last week of meeting with Paul from the water company, because I'm the liaison for the water company. He took me on a tour of the water plant, and that was the first time I ever been in there, so it was kind of interesting. And I also met with Scott from the Erie Zoo, I'm a liaison for the zoo, and I'm looking forward, you know, to working with both of these gentlemen, and I have other meetings I have coming up this week for my other liaison duties. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been pretty busy as far as working, attending a lot of community meetings and the community events in relation to Unified Erie and some of the non-violence or youth non-violence initiatives that are being proposed and strategies that are being proposed in our community. It was interesting that between Sunday and Monday evenings, I probably interacted with around 500-plus people in two different settings, in two different rooms. This chamber's being one, we had to open up the glass back doors because there were so many people, and then the Hurt Auditorium in the library was absolutely filled to capacity as well. And so it encouraged me to know that people were wanting to find out, even though some people were coming to be- people were coming to be, as my mother would say, nosy and just want to be curious, like Curious George, you want to see what's going on. At least there was a lot of interest and concern, and that was the most collective concern I'd seen on these issues of youth violence in quite a while. And so that was encouraging. Now, we just need to find a way to literally unify the ideas and the thoughts and the concerns, and we can move forward to have a movement to deal with these issues in a unified or a collective way. So that was encouraging, but it took a lot of time, and it was a lot of investment, but it was definitely worth all the effort. And it was great to see many of our, my councilmember peers there, but I know all of us have the same concern, maybe not always the same availability. Also, on the agenda under new business was the resolution to appoint Benjamin Wilson to the BPRC or the Blighted Property Review Committee. Mr. Wilson served, actually is finishing up a term on the Water Authority and has been a great asset, has changed his vocation, and he's working in economic development in the city and beyond the city and wanted to kind of keep his connection and try to help deal with some of the blight and some of the other economic development issues in the community and in the city proper. And so he availed himself to serve as an appointee to the BPRC. I appreciate that. Has past service and has continued service as a volunteer in multiple ways and in multiple committees and authorities. Also met with Kim Green and had some conversations with her just in general around some economic development issues and opportunities that are coming and have, that are here in our community, some other issues concerning community development block grant, had a bit of a brain freeze, community development block grant processes. We're going to talk some more with her about that. And so, yeah, there was just a lot going on in that office as well, so wanting to keep up with that. I will also be, as Mrs. Arrington said, having other meetings this week and coming weeks between now and our next meeting to be able to report on other liaison assignments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilman Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended my first Convention Center Authority meeting last week. Naturally, the main topic was the development plan for the former GAF property, which may generate as much as seven to ten million dollars annually into our tax base, which is what we like to hear, as well as numerous jobs. They are going to have a public hearing in the near future to give us more details. Naturally, you're going to have your pros and cons with the plan they come up with. Not saying adjustments can't be made to the site, but we definitely got to start moving forward and start somewhere there, so it is some good news we are hearing out of there. Attended the EMTA meeting. Not much happening there other than the charter, and although they discussed it briefly at their meeting, they actually put it on city council and county council to figure it out, which I thought the city council had to figure it out, our city council had to figure it out. Mr. Mersky sent a letter to the county on behalf of the city council and just asking what exactly they want. I mean, we hear different things in the media, but we never actually got anything from the county to say, what exactly do you want from us as a city council? We did receive a letter back and, put it bluntly, we'll see what those demands come to here. We did talk in caucus, and we're going to get our ideas and thoughts together regarding their response and move forward from there. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Winarsky. Councilman Kwiatowski?
Real quick, we just met with the O and E Pension Board meeting recently. Things are progressing well at the fund considering the shape of the market, but the fund itself is being well-managed, and I'll have more updates as they come. And we also had the pleasure of meeting with the Southeast Neighborhood Watch meeting along with President Mersky and I, and their concerns are always relevant as to that area and the constant changes going on there. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Kwiatowski. Mr. Winarsky?
I'd like to ask a question to CAS. I heard just yesterday that Merciaries was going, they weren't going to be able to rent houses, Merciaries students in the near future. They're going to have to all be student housing or?
As a private institution, the university has decided that for their students, they want them to get the full college experience, and because they have a supply of housing now that meets demand, they're starting with their athletes, and eventually the plan is over the next four years to move everyone back on campus to get that full college experience. Anyone that does not live in the city of Erie or Erie County, they'll have to move on campus. And I think part of it is, as with colleges across the country, you know, there's less babies being born, so there's a smaller pool of enrollment to draw from, and so they have the capacity now to do that, whereas a few years ago, they didn't have that capacity. So that is their plan.
But Jim, to remind you that that doesn't relieve the situation with Penn State Baron, which is already in our area, and they could fill up the gap, so neighbors are still going to be, you know, we don't know what's, it could still be rentals, and the character of the neighborhood has changed, so, you know, we applaud Merciaries for helping on that end.
In the right direction, though, to help relieve some of the issues they've had, though.
Absolutely. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
President Victor has been very cooperative in talking with him, and he's willing, he's a willing partner with the city as much as they can be, so I'm very pleased with that. Thank you, Councilman Kwiatowski. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also attended, along with many other councilmembers, the Violence Reduction Initiative meeting. You know, there's a very, very, well, very good attendance, a lot of passion, many people who have been personally affected by the violence. I think this shows how many people who attended really care about our city, and they want our city to get better, they want our city to be safer. So we, I think a lot of people learned a lot. We need to work harder on collaborating. We need to keep, continue to talk about these things and have more focused discussions. So I'm sure there'll be a lot more work ahead of us for these, this initiative to figure it out. Also, I attended the Erie Neighborhood Watch Council Advisory Committee last night. Our committee had some great conversation regarding the Erie Neighborhood Watch and how to best meet the needs of not only the neighborhoods but our entire city. We discussed ways to continue to spread the word by the Erie Neighborhood Watch. A lot of people just really don't know what they do versus what other neighborhood organizations do, so it's, I think it's a very good idea to get clarity there and try to keep that discussion going. I had mentioned maybe having some type of idea to have some type of, like, a meeting where all the neighborhood organizations would get together, including the NRO, including the Erie Neighborhood Watch, to try to have that discussion to make sure we're collaborating, we're make sure we're each focusing on our missions. We also discussed the goals and objectives for two thousand and six. There's a lot of things that the organization and the advisory committee wants to get done for this coming year. To also talk about the EMDH, EMTA charter that was already been discussed here. I have had informal discussions with county council members. We've discussed the, all the things that are kind of on the, have been out there in the media with the financial incentive, the board composition, the length of charter, but just informal discussion, but I, it's really, my concern is, what I've been hearing from a lot of people is, you know, given these proposed changes, there's, with the board composition, how is there any insurance that the citizens of Erie, the ridership, will continue to be effectively served? Also, the operational costs affected by these proposed expansions, how, you know, how would that, how would that be paid for? So there are concerns out there. Of course, many councilmembers have concerns, citizens have concerns, so we'll continue to go forward and meet with council as Councilman Winarsky has explained. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brennan. Councilman Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Erie Housing Authority continue to do their thing with public housing, and as always, they do an outstanding job. But equally as important, that they presented a check to the city for one hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents in lieu of taxes. The Erie Housing Authority also paid the city four hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars to support the various services, especially in their cops program, that we have police officers patrolling public housing. And we all know that public housing is one of the safe areas in our city. Also, we should take note that the Erie Housing Authority by law cannot pay real estate Well, let me also say that the school district received a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars and thirteen cents in lieu of taxes. But the authority also paid them nine hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents for educational programs to various centers in the city. Also, for the county, they received forty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents in lieu of taxes. All in all, they've been doing this since nineteen forty-one. In the total we have to date, including two thousand and fifteen, to all taxing bodies, eight million, two hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars, and they even paid fifteen cents. So they're doing a good job in their business. The board of directors work hard and know most of them. And I also attended the Unified Erie at the library. I didn't make the one down here at city hall. It was also a very interesting meeting, and I do question, you know, the title Unified Erie. Boy, did I hear, I didn't hear a lot of unity, but I think it'll work. I think the program that we're talking about instituting from Kansas City, we just have to tweak it to fit Erie. Big question was, it's a snitch program. I don't think it's a snitch program. And I gave some examples, which I won't do now, to individuals who were not in favor of, and they understood, but yet they're out there, you know? You and I may not be out there, but it is a good program. We have to do something. Public safety is key. Public safety is key. And the first one to call a police when they get in trouble is a criminal, and we have to respond to that. Our police officers, they want to go home to their families as well. So publicly, let me say, if I see you shoot somebody, I'm snitching. Be the biggest snitch. If you don't like it, come see me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Witherspoon. Just a few things to report. Like Councilman Kwiatowski, he and I attended the Southeast Hills Neighborhood Watch. One of the things that is great about going to these Neighborhood Watch meetings, I also attended the East Ave, Hess Ave Neighborhood Watch meeting, and the great thing about these meetings is that it's citizen-driven, and it's very grassroots, and it's a model of cooperation between the police, the elected officials, and the community. And so when we go to these meetings, people say, well, what gets done? Well, what gets done is nothing of a grand scale, but there are little things over time that improve neighborhoods. And we're very excited to have a new Neighborhood Watch starting in our downtown, and I'd like to thank Amy for spearheading that as a concerned citizen. And that's what's awesome about Neighborhood Watches, it's citizen-driven. I also attended the Unified Erie meeting here at city hall, and it is very informative to understand what they're trying to do. I think the two biggest pieces that are, we can do better right now are the reentry into the community after committing a crime and the prevention piece. So, you know, the enforcement piece is there already. We have to really beef up that prevention and that reentry so that we don't get people going back through the system, recycled in and out and in and out. And anything we can do to address those issues is a good thing. There are some concerns and we need, in the community, and we need to make sure that those concerns are addressed. And I'm confident that Unified Erie, working with the African-American Concerned Clergy and the NAACP, can come to a resolution that is, maybe not agreeable to everyone, but that satisfies the concerns. And so I look forward to them working together. And Unified Erie, just so everybody knows, is our volunteers, and I personally want to thank Councilman Jones for his participation in the program. He doesn't get paid for it. It's on his, after-hours, on his own time, and these people that volunteered for this are going above and beyond, and I just want to thank them for the concern of the community and for the good of the community. Also, Erie Insurance donated to smoke alarms. We voted on that today. I think it's a great program. If you, we know that smoke alarms save lives, so anything we can do to get smoke alarms into houses, we've done it with our rental inspection program. We make these available to people who can't afford them. It's a good thing. I also just attended the Convention Center Authority meeting with Councilman Winarsky, and the one thing that I did, I forgot to report the last time, I was the liaison before him, and I wanted to thank the board for allowing me to be their liaison, was that the Convention Center Authority has put in the infrastructure on the GAF property that alleviated the city from having to put in those sewer lines, and they also just put in a new pumping station to pump the water. So that would have normally been the city expense, they took that on, understanding that they need to be a community partner and work with the city, so I want to thank them for that. And finally, just briefly on EMTA. EMTA is a model example of intergovernmental cooperation. Let me repeat that. EMTA is a fine example, it's one of the few examples, shining examples, of intergovernmental cooperation, where everybody pitches in. Mill Creek pitches in money, Summit, Harbor Creek, Erie County, and the city of Erie. That's a good thing. Intergovernmental cooperation is a good thing. Eighty percent of the riders at our last meeting, Mr. Tan said, eighty percent of the ridership are city riders. The city has a vested interest in what happens to EMTA because our citizens are actually, on the current board, if you want to go by ridership alone, underrepresented on the board. Underrepresented. We want to work with the county, and at the same time, though, we have a fifty-year investment into the system, and we have eighty percent of our citizens invested in the system, and so we look forward to those negotiations. Thank you. From this part, city comptroller, Teresa Stankovich?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a aggregate board meeting scheduled for February sixteenth, so we'll be reviewing all the pension plans to see how well they survive through the market, ups and downs. We also are starting working on the state aid report. We've got the paperwork for that, so that's an every-year thing we need to do. And we've also finalized the updates to the water reserve investment policy, so we'll be sending those out to our managers for them to make sure that they have the current guidelines to follow. And we've also completed the application for the IRS, or to the IRS for the requalification for the pension plans, and that's required every four to five years, too. So that's all I have.
Thank you for your fine work. Administration?
Mr. President, thank you very much. I'd like to say congratulations to the downtown Neighborhood Watch for getting that effort up and off the ground. It is a grassroots effort to make the downtown a better, safer place for the folks who live here, so thank you. I know that you'll be meeting in the hands building tomorrow afternoon. I'm grateful to, oh, today, I'm sorry, my apologies, it's February third. My thanks to Chuck Skelley and Hands for opening their doors to your group, so congratulations. The administration's very pleased with the GAF proposal, Bay Front Place, I believe, is what they're calling it. is what they're calling it. Hopefully, we can get a budget passed in Harrisburg so we can then start discussions on CRIS and RCAP to get some additional funding for the developers. It's very important to the city to get that project moving. And lastly, good news coming out of Harrisburg from the Pennsylvania Municipal League, the City of Erie has been selected for the 2017 site for the annual meeting, so October 2017, all of our friends from Harrisburg will be, actually, our friends from across the state will be joining in Erie to see what we have to offer our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. With that, this concludes our council meeting, we'll adjourn.
City Council adjourns at 9:58. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Witherspoon.